Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, and the board meeting is now called to order. It is 6:01 PM. All board members are present except Director Ashley Cottingham. She is en route. Director Sariae Chondegiri, will you please read the land acknowledgement?
Thank you Chair. We are gathered today on the land of the Kalapuea who are represented by the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederate tribes of the Salits Indians. The relationship between the Kalapuea people and this land continues unbroken to this day and we offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Superintendent Castaneda, are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are none.
At this time, for our spotlights, I will turn this portion of the agenda over to Superintendent Castaneda.
Thank you. Well, this is an especially dramatic spotlight because we have a new backdrop. No longer are we using the whiteboard. So this gives you guys the full opportunity to be honored in the manner that you deserve. So we are going to start our spotlights and I'm going to ask Rosalba Diaz Ruiz to join us. Wonderful. She is our CSOC at Washington and she will be doing our community spotlight, so I will pass it over to you.
Good evening Chair Richardson, Board Director, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisor. It's an honor for me to do the community spotlight for Capital Football Club. As a family service provider, I see firsthand how important it is for kids to have a safe, structured activities after school. Capital Football Club is more than just a soccer organization. It is a respected community partner that provides opportunities for students to stay active, build valuable life skills, and form meaningful connections. One of their most impactful programs in our school is the GRAS program and after-school initiative that brings soccer directly to elementary schools. Through GRAS, CFC coaches collaborate with the school staff to create a fun and supportive environment where students learn teamwork, discipline, and confidence. This program is a game changer for many families, breaking down barriers like transportation and cost, so many more kids can participate in structured, high-quality sport programs. Beyond after-school programs, CFC offers opportunities for players of all levels, from introductory clinics to competitive teams, ensuring that every child who wants to play has a place on the field. But CFC impact goes far beyond soccer. Their programs emphasize character building, development, leadership, and community engagement, helping students grow into responsible and confident individuals. We are proud to partner with Capital Football Club in this important work. Their dedication to youth development and community building makes a lasting difference for our families, and we look forward to continuing this partnership to support the well-being and safety of all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we will, everyone will join at the end of spotlights for photos. Thank you so much. Okay, so for our next spotlight, I would like to welcome our elementary-level director,
Good evening Chair Richardson, Board Director, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. Tonight, I'm proud to be joined by Principal Janine Pishkaran and to shine a spotlight on Brush College Elementary, one of many schools across our district taking meaningful steps to address the attendance challenges in our community. At Brush College, the focus is clear: increase student engagement, celebrate their efforts, and build a strong sense of belonging, all with the goal of improving attendance. Each morning, staff members welcome every student with a friendly greeting and a smile as they walk through the front doors. It may seem like a small gesture, but it sets a powerful tone for the day. And when a student arrives late, staff don't question them. Instead, they say, "We're glad you made it." That message of care and connection goes a long way. Principal Pishkaran plays an important role in this work by staying in close contact with families, following up when there are patterns of tardiness, absences, or other concerns. Students who attend regularly, those with 90% attendance or better, are recognized each month on a themed bulletin board. In November, they were attendance rock stars. Brush College also incorporates positive behavior support to further encourage student engagement. When students demonstrate safe, responsible, respectful behavior, or simply work hard, they receive blue tickets. These tickets can be traded in at the school's Bulldog Store. Classrooms collect red tickets, and when they earn 40, they get to celebrate together with a small party. And it's working. From the 22-23 school year to the 23-24 school year, Brush College's regular attendance rate rose from 64% to 79%. That's a 15 percentage point gain in just one year. That's a celebration. Thank you Brush College and Janine for leading with heart and helping students feel seen, valued, and excited to be at school. Thank you.
As Janine makes her way back to her seat, I will also just say that it is all of the little things, it's the parties and the tickets, but I have also gotten a chance to see the culture at Brush College. And in particular, I spent time with Janine and she knew every child's story. It's what you hope for when you're a parent and you send your littlest one to school. It's what you want to be true. It's not true just there, but it is true there. And it is a wonderful thing to be part of, so we want to thank you for that. Okay, and finally, I would like to welcome Risa, who will bring us home with our student
Got to raise the glasses first. Okay. Good evening Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. Tonight, I'm thrilled to introduce you to one of Salem Kaiser's shining stars, Emma Black, a fifth grader who recently took home the top honor at this year's Sodexo Future Chef Competition. Each year, Sodexo hosts this exciting event for fourth and fifth graders across our district. Students are invited to submit a recipe based on a selected theme, and we receive hundreds of creative entries. After carefully reviewing each one, a panel selects 10 finalists, who are then invited to bring their recipes to life at a live cooking competition. The event is held at McNary High School, where student chefs cook their dishes with support from McNary's culinary program students, who offer guidance but never take over. The students do all the cooking themselves, no help from parents. Each competitor wears a future chef apron and hat, which they get to keep, and prepares their dish for a panel of judges made up of district staff and leaders. This year, our judges included Superintendent Andrea Castaneda, which she was thrilled to see you, two district leaders, and two of our school nurses. They evaluated dishes based on presentation, taste, and creativity, and asked the students questions about their process and inspiration. Emma prepared a Swedish pancake that wowed the judges with both flavor and flair. Her dish earned her first place, and now she's advancing to the regional round of the National Future Chef Competition. If selected, she'll move on to compete at the national level. Emma is a very caring, thoughtful, and kind student. She brought in her prize-winning pancakes to the office yesterday for all of us to try, and they were so delicious. I told her, "I thank you because I forgot my lunch," so it was great. What makes Emma's story even more special is that she also participated in this event last year, where she placed second. This year, her hard work, perseverance, and passion for cooking helped her take the top spot. We're incredibly proud of her accomplishment and excited to cheer her on as she continues her future chef journey. Congratulations, Emma, and thank you for reminding us that with creativity and dedication, amazing things are possible.
I will briefly add that we also had Board Director Hudson at the event. She was there for the duration, including a lot of kitchen time. And I want to share just a couple of things. First, those were some delicious pancakes, that's true, but what I also want to add is that they had a story, and it's a story about the family. It's a story about why that dish has become special in your family, and I think it will now become special in others as well, which just really made it a wonderful contribution. And I want to tell you something that Mr. Shelton, the McNary culinary teacher, said: "One of the most admirable qualities I noticed overall was the challenger's capacity to remain calm under the pressure of the big kitchen." It is a big kitchen, so anyway, just an amazing job. And we will meet everyone up at the backdrop for photos. Thank you Chair. Tonight, my report is going to focus a little bit on the moment and the environment that we find ourselves in as school members and as people who care very much about public schools. And what I want to start with is acknowledging how surprising it feels to feel uneasy about sharing thoughts about our moment. And it's because there is a kind of shocking silence that's existing right now, not just in schools, but in a lot of places. I think it has to do with uncertainty and the pace of change, but I also have to acknowledge that I think it has to do with an unfamiliar sense of threat that makes it hard for people to speak. And I want to push just one elbow through that feeling of uncertainty and silence and talk a little bit about what our school district in Oregon, but also school districts generally, are facing right now. In addition to uncertainty, we're also facing more imminent threat related to federal funding. And I think the thing that is most important to me to share about this moment is that in Salem Kaiser Public Schools, we have the profound responsibility and the benefit of knowing who we are. Being tethered to certainty around values and identity helps these uneasy moments feel less disruptive. On April 3rd, all state departments of education and therefore all school districts received a notice from the U.S. Department of Education. And that notice in effect said that a signature needed to be affixed to a form. This form says, "We need you to assure us that you are adhering to the Civil Rights Act of 1964." And so I'll pause briefly to say that for most educators, we consider this to be a sacred and landmark piece of legislation. It doesn't just define what we can't do, it sets forth an aspirational value of what we want schools to be. And there isn't a single part of me that ever wonders whether we fully adhere to that. It's partially because I know who our team is and I know who our educators are, and we live to the spirit of it in everything we do. It's an ambitious spirit. It's a spirit that says that no one shall be denied access. The form that we received goes on to say, beyond adherence to the Civil Rights Act, that we have to acknowledge that certain DEI activities are considered illegal. And this is where I falter, because I don't know what that means. They are not defined. They are not identified. There isn't a clear precedent to help us understand that sentence. Certain DEI activities may be considered illegal. It's sentences like that that are creating silence, because the threat that sits behind it is specific, even if the prohibition is not. The threat that sits behind that is a threat of loss of all federal funding. And for our district alone, that is around $80 million a year. It's such a large number that it is not possible to plan for. I've had multiple conversations with elected officials, with community members, with members of the staff, and they say, "Well, what will we do?" And the reality is, we cannot plan for a reduction at that scope. But what we can do is move with confidence and certainty about who we are. We are a place that sees everyone as unique and celebrates that uniqueness. That includes racial and cultural and linguistic backgrounds. And that kind of celebration is not zero sum. Doing that for one child, or 10 children, or 100, does not mean we cannot do it or do not do it for everyone. We can know that. We can also know that the people who work in our system want to see every student succeed. I know that, and we can be confident in that about ourselves. The other thing that we can know is that whatever has grown around this phrase, DEI, we can know that we do choose, we proactively choose diversity, because we live in a pluralistic community and country. And to not choose diversity means, I suppose, to choose uniformity, which doesn't make sense to most of us. And to not choose equity seems to me to mean that we choose inequity, which is equally And to not choose inclusion means that we choose exclusion. And I don't think that's true about us either. I don't believe that school systems should be at the center of a political fray, and I do not believe that entitlement funds that belong to our children should be the collateral that is held against us in order to comply with an unclear legal standard. I believe it is an inhumane act to do that to school districts in America, and I believe there are better ways for us to talk about differences than to hold our federal funding I believe we can be a place that shows that there are other ways to be and better ways to resolve this moment, but I do not believe that that means that there is an early capitulation to this demand. There are options before us. The options sit right now with the State Department of Education, they do not sit with districts. By April 24th, a decision needs to be made about signing this form. And amidst all of the noise of everything else going on, I do feel it is my personal responsibility and duty to make sure that we do not miss the moment that sits before schools, because that's what we're charged to protect and represent. The Attorney General, the Governor, and the State Department of Education need to decide what to do. And we need to be clear that our values are unchanged regardless of a form, that our practices are stable regardless of a definition, that our identity as a district that celebrates everyone and their differences and their stories and their families is who we were and who we are and who we will continue to be. There are about a half a dozen states that have already made a decision or signaled their decision about this form. And their decision is, in some ways procedural, but in other ways symbolic. They are not signing on behalf of their schools, on behalf of their state, and on behalf of their districts. They are not signing. I hope that Oregon finds in itself the courage to follow suit, because to do otherwise is to pass that responsibility, that engineered and false choice point, down to this board and this district and all 197 districts in Oregon. That's not how we're stronger. That's not how we're clearer about how we lead or what we do. This is the moment for Oregon, and I believe in us, and it requires us to take a common position together. Beyond that, I believe in this district, whatever else happens. We know how we are. We know that we need to be better in many ways, but we can be proud of the ways that we are already principled and clear and value-centered and excellent. And with that, I will pass it back to the Chair.
Thank you so very much. At this time, we'll have the ninth grade on track report. I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce.
This is actually, in many ways, a perfect successor, because this is part of the way that we demonstrate our commitment to all students and reach for the excellence that we know that they have. And it doesn't start in ninth grade, but that is an important year. So I will pass it over to Matt Biondi and Larry Ramirez, our middle-level and secondary and high school-level directors, and they will walk us through our results.
Good evening, and I think we have Ms. Nevs on the line as well.
Yes, good evening. I will get us kicked off here. So good evening Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Student Advisors, Superintendent Castaneda. Tonight, we will dive into our results policy monitoring report, looking at our progress with ninth grade on-track rates. We will share our data from the 23-24 school year, our progress towards the targets the board established in this area, and how we are continuing to take action on the data. In this report, we are considering the number of students who successfully completed six or more credits during their first year in high school. And for the details, I will turn it over to High School Director Ramirez to get into the data.
Thank you. As you can see, the slide before you here projected, we're looking at this over a two-year increment. You do see a little dip from last year, but over time, you'll see our line is growing. We still are above our target, so we are excited about that, but we obviously need to continue to make progress. You'll see where we're at there on the graph at 80.1. There were, of this data, 29, 171 ninth graders are a part of this data that you're looking at here on this slide for the ninth grade on track. Next slide. Thank you. Here you'll see a breakdown by ethnicity, by ELL status, and by gender. As you can see, the numbers there, some things to point out that we can be proud of for sure. Early college, high school had 100% of their students on track. West Salem made our largest increase at about 2.5%. Again, over the two-year period, both male and female students saw growth. Females consistently have a higher on-track rate than our male students. And you'll see also in our ELL student groups, both ELL and ever ELL also saw improvement over the two years. We do not have information, as ODE does not give us information, on students that are
As Mr. Ramirez pointed out, we have several highlights in this data. We are proud of the fact that we are still above our board goal, but we know that in order to reach our goal for 2025, we need to move that up to 82.1%. So we'd like to look at the data and really consider, what are we seeing, not only year to year, but also over the two-year period? As Mr. Ramirez pointed out, we see several groups who improved over the two-year period, even if we saw a slight dip or some flat data in one year. And this tells us that generally, our practices are working for our students, and that we also need to dig in and understand when we have some subgroups or entire cohorts of students who aren't making the progress we want them to make. Again, this particular indicator is asking, in the first year of high school, are students earning at least six credits, which means that they're passing most of their courses? And then we're also looking carefully internally at whether or not they're passing the courses that they need for graduation, so that our team can intervene if they need to recover any credits or change their sequence of courses to ensure that they receive all of those credits. We want to make sure as well that any differences that we're seeing between groups of students, for example, Mr. Ramirez mentioned our male and female students and the difference we see in their on-track data, and we want to make sure that we're plugging in supports to continue the growth for both of those groups. to continue the growth for both of those groups. Turn that back over to Mr. Ramirez to tell you about what we're doing with our ninth-grade students.
So, as you see here in the slide, we have ninth-grade data teams, where teams of teachers, educators get together and review information on how our ninth-grade students are doing, who is needing extra support, who is needing intervention so that they can continue to get the support that they need and be successful. Again, our goal is to make sure that everyone has six credits by the end of their freshman year, but what really, we're looking even deeper and tighter inside, looking at who is really getting the core credits. Because core credits are usually the barrier towards graduation. It's not because I didn't get a elective credit, it's because I don't have a math credit, or I don't have a language arts credit. So we're really zeroing in on, how are you doing in the four core areas? And what are the things that we need to be doing to support you best? Is that after school? Is that Saturday school? Is that credit recovery? Is that summer school? We have a lot of options to try to support students to make sure that we are giving you what you need in a timely fashion, where you're not slipping so far behind that you would have to retake the course. Okay? So that is definitely the work of our ninth-grade teams. As I kind of started to touch on there, the just-in-time supports, knowing that schools have access to a dashboard that gives you up-to-date information, as up-to-date as the teacher's gradebook is, as up-to-date as what they're looking at, so that they can see and ask questions about how can we better help the students that need our extra support in whatever core course it may be. Core class size considerations. One thing that we prioritize when we schedule classes is the class size of ninth graders. We really tried to push a little more FTE there, so that teachers have smaller class sizes, especially in our ninth-grade core classes. So that those classes are not our biggest classes, but actually our smallest classes. So we really prioritize that piece for our students so that they have the support again, and the teachers have a more manageable load in that classroom. Credit recovery, I also kind of touched on. Credit recovery can look throughout the school day, wherever that may be. We have what we call a wheel, where you could be in for three to four weeks doing your language arts, getting that caught up. We can get you out of that into a math, get you caught up in there. When you're all done, caught up with your grades and that piece, you'll go into an elective for some time, and that really helps students not have to retake a course from day one through the end of the semester. So we're able to create schedules, creative schedules that really help our students and doesn't give them, doesn't force them to take the class completely over. Other credit recovery opportunities, I also discussed our summer school. We also have some online programming where credit recovery can be part of the programming as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Director Cottenham?
Thank you, Chair. Just looking at the breakdown, do we have any sense of what has caused such a significant drop for our Black and African-American students? It looks like a giant, like a 10% improvement from 21-22 to 22-23, but then we dropped back down a little? Do we know what we think is accounting for that? That's one question. And then I just continue to be really concerned about our American Indian, Alaskan Native, and our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander populations. Because it looks like we've made some minor improvements for American Indian, Alaskan Native students, but we dropped again for our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, and they're in the 60s. We've talked about particular interventions and strategies for these groups of students in the time that I've been on the Board, but it doesn't seem like we're making quite the progress that we all hope for. Just would love your thoughts on that. Are there things the community can be doing, or the Board can be doing to help?
Yes, thank you for the questions. On the Black, African-American question, I can't tell you by that group of students exactly what causes the 4%. I know the N there, the amount of students, is not as big as we would see in the white or Hispanic Latino. So a smaller batch of kids, swing of kids, creates a significant dip in numbers, or can make a significant dip in numbers, or increase because of that, because that's a smaller group. With the American Indian, Alaskan Native, is that the one you're asking about, Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander? A practice that we've seen some promise in is at South Salem High School, where we have a group with a teacher that meets regularly, that gets that connection, that gets that student group together. We've also partnered with a local church where the students go when they play volleyball and basketball, and that's getting that connection to the school, getting them to culturally activities that they appreciate and want to be involved in, which, again, brings them to school where we can do our best work. But that continues to be a group that we need to serve better. And that is one of our, definitely across our system, one of our TSI, our targeted supports, that we are focusing on to provide better supports. What is it exactly that we can do to support that student group better, because we're not where we want to be?
And for the American Indian, Alaskan Native kiddos, are we, I know we've talked also since the time I've been on the Board about doing some MOUs with Celest and Grand Ron to make sure that we have specific strategies to get these kids to school and to be getting the credits they need. I just want to call that out. I know there's a lot of work that's happened on it, but are there other specific strategies we're doing for that population of kids?
Well, Larry's probably best situated, but I will add, we have continued to work on our partnership, and then more specifically, an MOU with Celest and Grand Ron. I also think that some of the more promising work that we have started there and continue to do relates to focused attendance programs. Underneath these numbers are often significant attendance patterns. If there was one thing that I think could really shift these outcomes, it would be improving the conditions that make our students want to come to school every single day. It is very easy to get behind and become credit deficient as absences accumulate. And so we do share information and partner with the tribes to better understand the nationally-proven models and the strategies that have a unique impact on our American Indian and Alaskan Native students. But Larry, I'm sure you have more.
And I'll just share another piece of information. We're also, we've also learned that a lot of our students in the Pacific Islander group, and in other groups as well, are, don't have access to drive. They can't pay the fees to be able to do driver's ed, where they can obtain a license. So we're even being creative there. We're going to try a pilot program where these students can get a license and actually come to school, because they're sharing with our school staff that, I don't have a way to get to school, and my parents are gone, and I live that far away. I either have to drive illegally, or I don't come to school. And there's that balance of, when do I take the chance and when I don't? So we're going to, we're going to try to help these students and support a program through there that we've been meeting on and getting ready, so that we can, again, provide another opportunity. What are the barriers, all the barriers we can take down? That we can do on our side to support our students to get to school? Because that's our number one, it is our number one issue, is we have to have you consistently here at school to support you the best we can.
I think on this one, what I would also encourage is that, rather than looking with quite so much attention on the year-over-year change, because some of these N sizes are really small, we can get to a version of your same question by just looking at the variation that persists across groups regardless of the N size. Our Director of Data, Jonathan McElroy, can tell us a little bit about the N size. I think it matters, because in this conversation, you can give us a sense of how many students it might require to create shifts like this.
Yep. So, just looking at the N sizes for this past year for Black, African-American, there were 50 students total included. So thinking about that four percentage point shift, it's about two students. And I don't want to make this feel like we are hiding some of the changes based on these small N sizes, but it is very possible that we see large increases up or down based on, again, in that case, two students, that was driving the primary difference year-over-year. For Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, it was 70 total students. And then for our Native, our American Indian and Alaskan Native, it was 19 students.
I think it would be helpful to have those numbers in that data. Yes. Director?
Thank you so much, Chair. Hey, thanks so much for preparing this. So mine was similar, so thanks for going into depth, Ashley. But more, I was curious what our platform looks like originally going in, the proactive platform that, say, each high school implements, to, say, counselors, whoever watches, you know, keeps track, and what that looks like, of what the kids are getting scheduled into and remaining scheduled in and on as the next semesters and years ago, that they're on track with the right classes, say, core classes at the beginning. I know there's a couple differences with some high schools, like some might have a student leadership backup to kind of help the kids a bit. But have you, do we have a baseline for how we are kind of proactively just set up in general? And then we pick up pieces from there? Have we had things from high schools that, tips that have worked well, that we've tried sharing with others as well?
Definitely, there is collaboration culture where schools are sharing, so I'll start with that, in terms of what is being successful? What are they doing? What interventions are they providing to students that's seen a change, a positive change in data? But a visual for you would be, there's a, it's a spreadsheet, there's a math box that says whatever, 74%. There's a language arts box, there's a science box, and there's a social studies box, and all those have percentages of kids who are on track that are passing. And with that, I can click into that and find out, okay, who are the kids that are passing? Who are the kids that are not? Where are they at? What supports do we need? And that's part of that ninth-grade teaming, that I would look and say, okay, we've got this many kids on track on math. Who are the kids that are not? Where are they? Are they 7%? Or are they 54%? And we just need to make up a few assignments. What is it that we need to do inside that data? But there is a platform by school that they can look at.
Thank you, that's good. So I was curious what the check-in is to. So how often? Is it the counselor that does? Is it that we'll go in and look at that to make sure?
It's a team, it's a team of educators, and it depends on school. I couldn't give you a, is it every six weeks or every nine weeks? But it is the schedule that the school keeps in terms of them meeting, and it's definitely something that I check on when I'm meeting with principals, when we look at the data at each of their schools. And I regularly have site visits with the schools, and that's something that we're always checking on.
Okay, so it sounds like it's the same, like, title that, oh, this is what they do specifically, and then it might be checked by this person.
It's also part of our advisory in checking in with our students, and they have that weekly, in terms of how are they doing?
Director Shandgir?
Thank you, Chair. You know, this is my sixth year, and every year, we kind of go through this data by different ethnic groups and racial groups in our school district, and in the whole state as such. But I started looking at it from a slightly different way. I start sorting out, for example, 23-24, anywhere from 6 to 37% of different groups did not reach the benchmark of, let's say, 100% of completing six core credit. Because, you know, if you see 63% for Native American and American Indian and Alaska, and then you kind of go to 94% for Asian, but pretty much all the groups have not reached the full 100% target. So really, the question is, are we missing something by just looking at their racial groups? Or are there any underlying factors, intersectionality of poverty, or lack of driver's license, or whatever else may be contributing? And, because when it comes to your strategies, you're not having different strategies for different ethnic groups. Because the child is not doing six credits, the teacher is going to teach to everybody. Our budgeting also doesn't go by the ethnic groups. So, are we kind of missing something by just looking at the ethnic groups or racial groups and not really? Is there some other variable like poverty, or middle year of the school transition, or lack of transportation that may be contributing? Because if you see, for example, the large group, let's say Hispanic-Latino group, it has remained almost flat for the last three years. And if I can go back, it'll probably remain flat, 73 to 76%. Even in white, it has remained flat. So, and it is like, you know, that means close to 25% or so, 24% are not reaching the target. Is that a subgroup that we need to start thinking of something else? What is the value of continuing to look only on racial groups without digging in further? And the third question is, are there something we can do at the middle school level that we can start preparing them before they go to the high school? Because if you know that's the range of kids who are not going to be reaching the full 100% mark, then can we start identifying those kids in the middle school? And maybe the summer vacation between middle school and high school, and get them ready ahead of time, rather than trying to chase them after the fact that they are dropping out or? Any thoughts on that? Why are we continuing to sort this way? When the lines have, I mean, the numbers are almost flat to me, and they're still the scat, from the ideal benchmark to what they are scoring is almost like, it's almost remained the same. At least, maybe I'm missing something.
Well, I'll start with some answers to your three questions, which, as I understand them, are, what does a view that focuses on language status, gender, and race tell us, and what might we be missing? And then your other one is about middle school, which we will welcome our middle school director to answer directly. So, I don't think we have to choose between different ways to look at it, because there's so many legitimate ways to do it. From my eyes, the fact that there may be, say, for example, lack of progress within one racial or ethnic category matters to me, but what also matters to me is the differences between racial and ethnic categories. I do think that tells us a story that we need to be paying attention to, and the good news is that, as a nation, we've been practicing paying attention to this for 25 years. And it's because we know that there are predictive aspects of this, and we know that across all school districts, the patterns that are most pronounced are the patterns that exist by the categories you see here. I do think you're asking an important additional question, though, which is, what are we not looking at that is equally powerful and predictive? We don't have data sets on who has cars. That, I think you used it as an example that was native to the conversation, but also, we don't have that data set. Family poverty status has a strong bearing on outcomes. And that's not a surprise to any of us. We know that that's true. We know that families who are experiencing greater economic hardship, food instability, housing instability, those are all stress factors on a family that cascade into all of the members of that family, including students. Our poverty data is complicated right now, because the state recently changed the method that defines it and the way that we classify students. So we don't have the methods that we once had to identify students individually and say, this is a student living in poverty, this is a student who isn't. That wasn't our choice, that's a change in state definitions and federal guidelines. But inside of that data is a profound story about the need for support that's specialized and generalized need. So I think those are some answers to your questions, and I'll pass the importance of solid middle school academic experience on to Matt.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the question, I appreciate that. I think there's a number of ways to think about this. One of, you mentioned about other strategies. I think when you get to this point, I'm thinking of the seniors now, a lot of that does boil down to one-on-one conversations with kids. We have interviews, we call the empathy interviews, is one of the strategies we use to really find out, because it really comes down to the individual needs of that student in trying to solve whatever barriers that student may have. And so, schools are always looking for new, and always welcome new ideas, and looking for different ways of trying to find system supports for kids. But then, when we do that, then it really has to drill down to that individual need, and that's where things like the driver's license piece comes out. For middle school, we feel a great sense of responsibility to this data, and, you know, our mission-
And, you know, our mission in middle school is, is to send every single high school, every single eighth grader to high school, ready to be successful at high school. And so this is definitely on our minds as well. You mentioned summer school. We do have opportunities for eighth graders to take, they, they would take summer school out there, at their high school. So that, that is an opportunity that we provide. Middle schools have summer school as well. And we have a big effort this year for our middle school summer schools, summer school to try to get students who need that additional support there. Sometimes we have, we struggle to actually get students to come to summer school so we can help support them. But we, we have, while we don't have the same type of support, it looks different. We still have, we track the data. We are looking at a student's success. And, and really what we're trying to do, you know, some, some of dropout rate and students not being successful is the, the way that the level of expectation around academics grows as a student progresses. It really gets more and more difficult. And so with our curriculum adoption, we are really hoping that providing those grade level skills and really being intentional about that all through our system. But certainly middle school is like deeply engaged in that process, that when students get to high school, they will feel better prepared and feel like they belong in that Algebra I class because they actually have the skills to be successful there.
Chair, do you mind if I ask a follow-up question?
Please do.
Thank you very much. You know, I am an immigrant parent. I mean, you can see that, right? So I, you know, here is the challenge I'm finding is, how do we get our children from different communities to have a growth mindset starting a little bit early? Because it's, it becomes very difficult to negotiate the system. Once they start missing and dropping, you know, they're kind of lagging behind. And, you know, you're talking about such a large number and our children get lost. Like we said, fifty children from black families in the middle of forty thousand kids. They can be scattered everywhere. They can be lost because our budgeting doesn't follow this pattern. Our teaching staff may not really be connecting with kids in all places who probably may look like them. So my worry is that if small numbers, they can just get, you know, they can be a small n compared to a big number of kids and they can be lost and they can be spread everywhere. As they go to high school, you'll probably have a few teachers who will teach for everybody. So I know the state doesn't look at the poverty number like Superintendent you said. Can we do something a little bit more than what the state asks us on our own so that this data becomes meaningful? Because the same kind of pattern of dividing the community over years, I'm seeing almost like similar scatter between what should be an ideal benchmark to some of the things like, at least it has got three years data in here. But if you kind of go back and look behind, it's almost similar. There's every community has stayed back behind where they were. And moving forward, this may be an opportunity for us to start seeing, is that the only factor or is there anything else that may be causing this difficulty in bridging, closing the gap between what should be an ideal benchmark in some of these communities? Obviously, offering program may be one way, as you all suggested. And how do we get the growth mindset in different communities starting early rather than feeling that they had, you know, where this is where we are and this is where we remain? That's my biggest worry is, I don't want our children to start thinking that, okay, you're not going to make it in science and then they'll start taking some other field. So this is, it becomes very difficult. I've experienced with children I know in very close family friends, oh, no, that's too hard for me. That's not for me. You know, there, there used to be gender difficulty, gender disparity between children going into computer science or engineering fields. So that's where I'm really thinking that we may have to start looking at the data differently rather than just by this racial, ethnic group alone. So that every child can have a growth mindset rather than feeling they're stuck in this trend. I don't know if I'm making sense.
No, I, I understand. I appreciate comments. I think part of our curriculum is specifically to have our students really sit in that rigor and, and not try to reach out too quickly as a staff member to help solve them. We really want them to persist through that. And that's really how you do grow, growth mindset, right? Is actually face a problem that's difficult and actually persevere through it. And that's, that's a lot of what we're trying to shift to in our curriculum. But I did want to speak to one, the notion that the fifty students, African-American students are lost. I think if you asked our high school principals and high school C-Socs and our grad coaches, they know all of those kids by name. They know where they live. They know their family situation. So while we don't have every student that's crossing the finish line with us, they're not lost. We, we know intimately who these kids are. We just haven't solved the, the issue for all of them quite yet.
I just want to add that this is everybody's problems. It's not just the school's problem. Our community-based organizations need to start putting more efforts into these, this movement as well. Our parents need to understand what is required of their students. Attendance is huge and we started off the school year with a big attendance bang. If you're not at school, you're not learning, you get behind and that's how you fail. We've got to get parents and students to understand, you have to come to school. And we need our community to embrace attendance. When I see kids out during the school day, now that I'm retired, I ask them, what school are you going to? What grade are you in? Why are you not at school today? Come on. We've got to be brave and courageous and we have to take this on as a whole family. And it's not just on the schools. And we've done some great things in our district. We've hired Pacific Islander and we've hired African-American, black community resource specialists, people who've had similar lived experiences that are going out to those homes who know what these kids need and who are convincing the parents that they need to do things differently. The major thing is getting our kids in school on time. Four years old, we, they need to start off at, at four years old and not stay at home with grandmother. The culture has to change. So we all play a part in changing these outcomes. Amen? Amen.
I'm with you there. And one more comment just on, on Dr. Shandigiri's comments. With the growth mindset, we are really focused in on making sure our students that are not traditionally in our AP and IB courses are getting identified and are getting selected and are getting advocates so that they are enrolled in those courses so they have, that they see themselves as high achievers, that they see themselves as strong learners, that they can be in the programs that everybody else is. And we try to knock down every wall and every barrier so that students can get in to our, our most difficult courses and get this, not just get them in, but then we got to get them in, support them so they can receive this, so they can have success in those courses. And that is definitely a big push that we, we really want because we want everybody to be in those classrooms that are, are most rigorous. And that should be a representation of the entire school demographic, not a, a select few.
Yes. Director Ortiz.
Just the last question because at my end, you know, I was just looking at the credit recovery on the current progress and next steps and the, the credit recovery opportunities, the summer school credit recovery. And I have, I have a sophomore myself, so I know that what my kid is hearing at school doesn't always make it home because she's not going to tell me about Saturday's school because she doesn't want to go and give up her Saturdays, right? So I am curious in terms of what you could share with us around successful communication strategies with families to inform families, I think echoing, I know what Director Richards said was sharing, right? Around here's where your child is and here's where they are. And I understand that part of, you know, they're, they're growing into young adulthood and so we want, also want to encourage that autonomy. But I, I'd just love to hear a little bit more of how, how are we engaging parents and how is that communication with parents, what have we found effective so far?
So I, I have two kids in high school myself and I get those Saturday school notifications through Parent Square. So they come to me and I say the email and, and we have that talk. But there's definitely communications out to, from the schools to the Parent Square program that, that I know I receive notifications on. So there's definitely that piece in terms of a parent communication. There's the teacher communication to kids. They're telling them, hey, I'm going to be at Saturday school today, so if you need help with your math, come see me because we're going to be there from ten to two. So show up, we're going to provide food and snacks and we're going to be there to help you get caught up with whatever you need to get caught up on. So that's how I have received them through the schools. And I think for me, that's been effective in terms of just reading those Parent Square notifications on when we have opportunities.
I'll give you one more question.
I mean, you know, this is a very important data because, you know, it's almost like twenty-five percent of all the core credits, they need to get it done by ninth grade in order to build later. Is that, you know, six out of twenty-four, they need to get, get through in the ninth grade? You know, so when our children enter the middle school, is there a way to kind of track who are on trajectory? Is there any way to predict that this kid will need extra help in order to finish the six credits by the time they are in ninth grade early on? I'm, I mean, it's all good that you're having so many different programs like credit recovery or kind of thing. Is there anything we, as parents, I'm interested, is there any way we can predict sooner and start getting them extra high dose tutoring or whatever it takes so that they are ready and making full use of all the opportunities that this country can offer our kids?
So there is a partnership obviously between middle school and high school and we do have communication in the spring about, here's the cohort of students, here are the students that are going to need some help in math, here are the students going to be, need some help in language arts. So there's definitely that bridge that we try to get all the information that we can on students so we know who's going to need the support so they're enrolled in the correct courses. And then the ones, once they're enrolled, what are the supports that we can provide? So it was definitely trying to be a warm handoff from middle school to high school. And we've appreciated that partnership. And again, we do have that summer transition program from students coming from middle school to high school. Obviously, we can't require students to come, but we definitely try to encourage them and incentivize their attendance. But we, we are definitely aware. When you say six out of, out of the twenty-four, you are correct in terms of finishing in that time. We do have a little flexibility, thankfully, that we offer thirty-two credits if you take a full schedule. So there is a little wiggle room, not that we want people to be using that wiggle room, but we do have that ability to earn up to thirty-two credits in four years. So there is that, there is that gap of, of credit opportunities where we can continue to support students.
Do parents know by the time their kids are entering middle school that this is, they need to kind of, this is the trajectory, this is six credits they need to take and their child may be needing some extra help? So that parents will be very happy to send them to your programs on the summer or whatever.
So the students in sixth grade? I don't know what they know in sixth grade.
You know, in the middle school, when the time they are getting ready to go to high school, if parents know that their child will need some extra help in order to finish the sixth grade or either in math or in reading or whatever it is, then they're more likely to be a partner. That's what I'm thinking.
There are definitely student assessment reports where you can check on your child and see how they're doing in math, language arts, on those pieces that we definitely have state test scores for, but we also have internal testing and, and information that is shared with families. So they definitely have a, a report that they can, they can receive and look at to see where is their child in comparison to grade level and how are they doing?
So that does tell them that they need to send their kids to extra tutoring, et cetera, in the middle between eighth and ninth grade so that they can be better prepared partners with you.
It doesn't directly say your child needs to come to summer school. It says this is the grade level your child reads at fourth grade level and they're coming in the ninth grade. So that would be something that, you know, obviously we would want and encourage again our, our families and students to attend. And again, that's not something, gaps like that, we are, are honest and we do have those. We're not solving those in a week or two of middle school or of summer school.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent, would you like to close this session out of our school board meeting?
Thank you, Chair. As we bring this particular data today, this is actually closing the cycle of monitoring reports. And I think one of the things that the board has heard from our team across the year is that we continue to look at all of this data from multiple points of view to try to understand what's really underneath. Superintendent Costada talked about attendance earlier and some of the trends we saw in our attendance data when we talked about it that we see here in our ninth grade on track as well. So we look forward to continuing to work with the board, not only on this ninth grade on track, work as we go into the next year, but also on all five of the goals that you have set for us. So thank you.
Thank you all very much. This was very informative and we appreciate all of the work that you're doing. Thank you. At this time, we have our public comment portion of the school board meet, meeting. As a reminder, all audience members are subject to immediate removal if you engage in abusive, threatening, vulgar or hate speech, including speech articulated on signs and clothing, which violate the district's harassment and/or Every Student Belongs policy. Please note, we provide an opportunity for public comment by virtual call-in, in person or in writing. Electronic mechanisms are used for translation. Each participant has three minutes. We have a countdown timer on the screen for monitoring that time. The timer counts down from three minutes at thirty seconds. It turns from green to yellow at one second. It turns red and plays a short bell to signal time is up. Please be mindful of your pace for our interpreters. If the board receives written comment ahead of the meeting, the written comment will be posted on the district website. Tonight, we have two people who have signed up and been selected to come in. At the, at this time, we're going to ask Reverend Dr. R. Weldon Taylor to please come.
I am Reverend Dr. R. Weldon Taylor. I am a local pastor. I am also a consultant, DEI consultant for the Midwell Amund Valley Community Action Agency. And I'm also a veteran of four years in United States Marine Corps. I came tonight to read my comments about what I think is necessary for students to be successful in school. Now that I have heard the part of the meeting that has gone on for the last hour, I'm going to choose not to read my paper. I'm just going to submit it for consideration at a later time. My only comment right now, I think, is one that was burning in me as I was listening to the comments that were taking place. Because fifteen years ago, I took part in a, a survey where we came together to answer the question of what do the students who are suffering the most in the learning setting, what do they need in order to catch them up the quickest? And the answer that came out overwhelmingly was the one that said, I need to be able to look to the front of the room and see myself. Since that was the answer, it seemed like the folks listening would then figure out how to make that one the priority going forward. But fifteen years later, most of those students who you referred to tonight cannot look to the front of their classroom and see themselves. And that's too bad because I think the teachers with empathy, the ones that feel the most about what it is. about what it is they're doing, recognize that through probably junior, juniors in high school, the kids, when they come in there, they come in there and accept the rigor, work hard to impress their teacher. Ain't no other reason why they come. They're not tuned in yet to getting something for themselves. They're there to impress us as teachers. We gotta be able to use that. If we're not able to use that to help them improve themselves, then we're not doing a-
Morgan Smith? Is Morgan Smith here? At this time, we'll take a 10-minute break. It's currently 7:12. We'll come back at 7:22. Thank you. Our meeting is now back. Fall back to order, please. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the 2025-27 Plan and Integrated Plan. I will pass it over to Superintendent Castaneda at this time.
Thank you. So this is a topic we've been discussing successively now for, I believe, three months, starting first with a presentation about the engagement activities and then later progressing into a few different views of the plan itself. And I am both delighted and proud to say that we now have a product that I think reflects an enormous amount of engagement and also brings what I believe is a necessary amount of focus to our system to allow us to accomplish the big things that lay before us. The plan that you have seen and will be presented tonight for discussion is two things in one. And I believe this is an elegant and appropriate way for us to bundle. The first is that it is the Integrated Plan required by the state. And the second, it is, is a two-year plan for the district as a whole. Having those two things completely integrated does allow us to more effectively manage our most important resources, which is people, time, and money in a way that's better aligned and as focused as we know how to be. We have had the chance to talk with many, many members of our community, our staff, our parents. You heard the presentation from the WESD two meetings ago, I believe, where we saw the aggregate information and the large number of people we've reached. But I also want to pause and say that we have spent an enormous amount of internal time on this too with all of our school leaders, our district leaders, we've talked with our labor partners. And the product before you, I think, well, I can't say that it represents full consensus. I do think that there is a sense of confidence and certainty about the trajectory that it sets us on. So with that, I will turn it over to Jonathan and I also want to welcome some other members of our team. Jonathan, I'll let you do that.
Yep, I do want to welcome, although I'm not going to call up, our Director of State and Federal Programs, Rob Schoper, and Dr. Ella Taylor from the WESD who helped provide so much of the ongoing community support, feedback, analysis, all the way down to the grant writing details and making sure that every single dollar in our Integrated Plan was going towards something meaningful for our students. So thank you both for the incredible work that helped get us here. Moving into the deck, first thing you're going to see that is new, and the deck is really only going to highlight some of the newest parts from what we've talked about over the last few months. The first thing you'll hopefully notice is we have a name for the plan. It is Climbing Together. And if you think about the themes that we've talked about of building strong foundations that give our students an opportunity to build a sense of belonging through attendance and the work that we're doing with Student Agency and Wellness, all the way to the very top of that pyramid for academic excellence, that is the journey that we're on in these next two years. So the next few slides, we're going to talk a little bit about the new elements, but the packet in front of you has all of the details, including the strategies, the initiatives, and going down to the activities that we are going to land on, or sorry, that we're going to execute over the next two years. This slide has been a little bit of a recurring theme. It's just regrounding in our why. And as Superintendent Castaneda said, this is about setting strong foundations, giving our schools and our district clarity and maximizing our resources. Once we have that clarity in place and we know what we're running to, we get to build together all the time, talent, energy, and passion for every single member of our community, our 38,000 students, our 6,000 staff, and the countless numbers of parents and community members that are supporting this work behind us. The first new element, and hopefully this doesn't feel too new, if you remember back to the state of the district when we had that survey and we asked everybody there what core values we as a system want to have. And not just in that opportunity, but in multiple different engagements with our staff, our families, and our students, we crowdsourced together five core values. I'm going to give you all a moment, just pause here on the slide to be able to read through it. One thing I do want to highlight, it's core values are not just definitions. Every single one of these are set as actions, something that we do differently in the way that we work, something that pervades every single activity, every single measure, and every single chance we have to make a decision in our system. A strategic plan is never going to give us a play-by-play for every single thing that we do, but core values give us a way to think about every decision we make. The next part of it, our theory of action. You heard us say a lot of these things about how it all fits together. The theory of action gives the sort of play-by-play and step-by-step of how each of those parts fit together. It's meant to be sort of a one-sentence summary that links everything in a logical sequence that ultimately builds towards that end in mind, which are the board goals that you have set and the student outcomes that we're going to attain in these next two years. So thinking about the individual strategies and steps on that pyramid, our core systems operations that serve all of our community, the healthy, safe learning environments that make sure that students feel welcome and engaged with that belonging every single day, that build towards that clear focus of academic growth. And ultimately then, making sure that all of our staff have the tools to serve our students, the ongoing cycles of professional learning that is built into that final part of the pyramid. And here the pyramid is back again. Again, this is just the high-level summary of it. You won't see this in the detailed version, the blueprint you have ahead of you, but sort of as a one quick visual, again, starting with strengthening our foundational conditions, moving into student agency and wellbeing, and then ultimately elevating academic excellence. Each of the bullet points underneath that are the three to four initiatives within each of those strategies that we reviewed each time. And then putting all of that together is, is one slide infographic. It has a lot of detail to it, but you can see through this the flow of the board goals, our theory of action, the three key strategies, and the initiatives underneath that. What you don't see here, but you do see in your handout, is all of the activities underneath each of these initiatives. And in part of that, a clear statement of how each of those activities and each of those initiatives have a student impact. The way that each of those are described and written focuses ultimately on the staff or student experience that each of those lead to. And finally, the Integrated Plan, again, it is part of the state requirement, but what we didn't want to do is have two separate plans with two separate sets of outcomes and two separate sets of funding priorities. Every single activity within the Integrated Plan, which builds together like eight different state grants and initiatives into one Integrated Plan from the state, feeds and directly lines back to the strategies in our strategic plan. And so the other document, you'll have details how each of our core Integrated Plan components align to our activities. Sometimes there are core operations for our schools. There are staff and student, directly facing student supports in our buildings. Other times, there are behind-the-scenes initiatives that help everybody's work get better, faster, and quicker and easier. But this is the first time that we've aligned all of those elements together to our overall two-year plan. Okay, I'm going to pause here if there's any questions. Otherwise, I'll hand it back to Chair Richardson.
Yes, Dr. Shandgiri?
Thank you Chair. You know, I really like that, that little pyramid and this particular one. It kind of summarizes, you know, I wish we could make a big print and post it everywhere, including all the schools, so that constantly it can sense the message. In your, that slide before that, if you can, just that orange part, yeah, there you go, strengthening our foundational conditions, modernized data systems that work for school and staff. Is there a way, we, could we consider a transparent data system that also is public-facing so that families and public also can understand and participate? Because then we are building agency in different communities, you know, whether we kind of looking at it as people who just arrived yesterday versus who have been here generationally. So they can, just like our chair said, then the families and community organizations can also, it's, it's more like a data-driven equitable advocacy rather than simply some emotional narrative coming in saying one story of one, but it may not help us in policymaking.
Yep, absolutely. I want to address both the points because I think both are very powerful statements. First, the, what we can bring in terms of that infographic. What you'll see in front of you is a blueprint and the reason why we called it sort of in that outlined blueprint is once approved by you, we're going to start building the much prettier version of the handout. So we didn't want to get too far ahead of the actual development of that. This is definitely not the version that you would bring with you, for example, to a community meeting or a community partner meeting or to work with parents and families. But that content that you are approving, it goes directly into that much more user-friendly document. And I think the second thing too is, to your point on the what's available to the public, a lot of these board monitoring reports, they're on our website, you can see those. The other thing that we've done is by directly aligning our board goals to our LGPTs, to our report card from the state, the state's new dashboard lets every member of the public drill into this for the whole district, for every single school, over time, across the entire state. But obviously, a lot of opportunity to build some of those together into one better place.
Just a follow-up. You're right. I mean, technically, it's available. They're all public domain after all. This, each number represents children. It's public number. Unfortunately, it's not very user-friendly. It's behind multiple this thing. For example, the discipline data, which is part of civil rights data. If when I go to the federal government site now, I can't even find it in a way that used to be available a year ago. The second thing is, we don't have a way of, in our Oregon Department of Education, it's hidden behind multiple things. If you go under the data, ODE, then it kind of, you had to go further and further. So what it does is it really, it, to me, it's a matter of, you know, educational justice when we have a transparent-facing, a healthy organization. So then people won't know, are we getting away from the Title VI or whatever else is happening, right? So I feel if we can intentionally call out and say, we will have a user-friendly, not like overbump them like, you know, drinking from a fire hydrant kind of data, which is ODE, but critical data, for example, you have all the board goals or something like that. So people can understand what a trend looks like and what it means, so they can all start participating in it. That's my hope. It used to be one of the board goals some time ago when we did the strategic planning, but I don't know, it kind of got dropped on the process. And people don't go back and look at the previous board meetings and try to see what was shared. I mean, it'll just, from a tech, you know, procedural point of view, we have done our due diligence, but okay, it's a checkbox, but it's not user-friendly when it is. I'm not making sense, I don't know.
Yep, absolutely. I think we can definitely do a better way of putting all of those reports together in one place that makes them much more front and center and we can absolutely work on that.
Do any of our other board members have questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the, the strategic plan as presented?
Yes Chair.
It's been moved by Dr. Shandgiri. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. Oh, I do.
All second.
It's been second by Director Harnish. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. At the, all of those in favor, any discussion, I think we had the discussion, okay? All those in favor of approving this, the strategic plan, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Those opposed, then say nay.
Nay.
Have one nay. Director Hudson, are there any abstentions? No. At this time, the motion is approved for our strategic plan. Thank you. Readings and discussion, at this time, we're going to turn it over to Superintendent Castaneda.
Thank you so much. This actually dovetails with the plan that you just approved and I want to thank you for that. It is a culminating moment on a lot of hard work that will be important for our system. The reason this is a dovetail is central to the plan you just approved is a serious approach to selecting and implementing the best curriculum that is available in the marketplace for our students. And because it is so central, we're going to take a little bit of extra time in this discussion to walk you through the, the process, how it's chosen, why it's chosen, who's involved in its selection, and then move on to a discussion of some of the actual first reads that are in front of you around adoption decisions. So with that, I am going to hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Nevs, who's with us on the screen.
Good evening again, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Student Advisors, and Superintendent Castaneda. This evening, we are bringing you a first reading of four agenda items related to the adoption of instructional materials. And as Superintendent Castaneda said, first, I'm going to give an overview of how we get to the recommendations that we bring this evening, and then I will share the four recommendations from our committees. So as we've talked about in several board presentations and reports this year, we are in our second year of a five-year process to update instructional materials in all core content areas at all grade levels. We achieve that goal through a really rigorous and structured process that we go through for each of these content areas. And you can see that in this graphic on this slide. At the top, you see those little colorful circles and we know that there are- At the top, you see those little colorful circles, and we know that there are lots of instructional materials that are published that could be available for schools to use. And we want to make sure that as we consider the available materials, that we're bringing you a recommendation that has gone through really rigorous steps to review the materials, understand what's available, compare those against our expectations for high-quality instructional materials, engage our community, and then ask our teachers to make final recommendations to the board. I want to be clear that curriculum adoption is a local decision that's made by Salem Kaiser Public Schools and approved by our school board. The Oregon Department of Education provides support to us and other local districts by doing a review of available curriculum aligned to the state adoption cycle. And they provide districts information on rubrics about the quality of those materials. We then review both those rubrics as well as other materials that may not have been reviewed by the state. We bring that information to our teachers on the committees so that they can review materials and determine which materials we will pilot and consider for adoption. We, this is a multi-month process for the 24-25 school year. This process started last March of 2024 and concluded in March of 2025. So we spend a lot of time really understanding what's out there that's available for our classrooms to utilize to ensure that our students are reaching our goals and reviewing those materials deeply, trying them out in our classrooms, and then engaging with our community as well as all of our teachers about which materials meet the needs of our students. Next slide. So when looking at what's going to rate as high quality, there are six key indicators that we are looking for across content areas. It's incredibly important for us that our materials are available in English and Spanish so that we can support dual-language instruction with authentic, high-quality materials. The materials need to be aligned to grade-level state standards. We ensure that our materials have authentic portrayals of diverse experiences and perspectives, that we see support for academic language development, both in terms of English language acquisition for our English learners, and ensuring that all of our students are learning academic language of each of those content areas. We want to make sure that the instructional materials have evidence-based instructional practices, including timely assessments that help teachers understand how well students are mastering that content. And then we're looking for options for differentiation for different learners who either need additional touchpoints, some intervention, or enrichment extensions. So our rubric looks at these six areas, and when we talk about the grade-level state standards, there's some additional areas that we'll look at deeply in a content area. For example, looking at the social studies standards around how students are thinking about the world, or looking at some of the exploration and STEM pieces in science courses. So those are the pieces where you'll see some specification in a content area. Next slide. So in this school year, we worked on four different content areas. We looked at elementary science, middle school science, high school social science, and actually secondary world languages, primarily high school, but also some middle school. And so we will be bringing you those four recommendations. I do want to note that when we talk about our world languages, we will be coming back in May or June for American Sign Language and Spanish. Those teachers have asked for a little more time to continue working to make their final recommendation to the board. And then, just looking forward, you can see that over the next three years, we'll be coming back to talk with you about our recommendations from our committees around literacy, mathematics, social studies in elementary, as well as elementary mathematics, high school science, and health and wellness in our secondary schools. So with this a conversation we will be having over multiple years as we ensure that all of our classrooms have up-to-date materials. All right, so let's dive in. We're going to talk a little bit about each of the four areas. And for each, we're going to share two slides of information. The first will list for you the publishers that were considered and the curriculum that were piloted in our classrooms. And then the second gives the committee's recommendation as well as a few key elements from that rubric that led to the recommendation. I want to reinforce that our committee is made up of primarily licensed classroom teachers as well as some of the content support staff and curriculum instruction team and educators who support our diverse learners. But they're also taking input from all of our teachers. All of our teachers in the content area have the opportunity to give their input into which resources they feel like will best meet the needs of their students and best support them and prepare them to deliver that instruction. So we'll start with world languages. So this year, we were looking at world languages for Japanese, German, heritage Spanish, Spanish, French, our AP Spanish Language and Culture, and American Sign Language. Today, we're bringing you recommendations for all of those areas with the exception of Spanish and American Sign Language, which will come back to the board in May or June. You can see here the various publishers that were piloted in our classrooms. And on our next slide, we'll take a look at our recommendations. So for Japanese, Chang and Suie, German, Carnegie Learning, heritage Spanish, one-way education, French, Wayside, and for AP of Spanish Language and Culture, one-way education. While different teachers of specific languages definitely paid most attention to careful review of their own language content area, all of the teachers contributed to a review to ensure that each curriculum meets all of the criteria on our rubric. Particularly here, we see alignment with the world language standards and the world readiness standards, authentic opportunities for students to practice both speaking and listening, and engaging online resources. The second content area, going to the next slide, is our high school social science. You'll see that we considered four publishers in that area. And we piloted materials from both Teachers Curriculum Institutes, which is TCI, and McGraw-Hill. And on our next slide, you'll see the recommendations. All of the course recommendations for high school social science are TCI materials, which is actually in alignment with the materials that were adopted for middle school a few years ago, a couple, two years ago. So you'll see a lot of the same reasons here for that selection, tight alignment with the standards, engaging multimedia resources, options for extension and differentiation, our quality materials available in Spanish, and seeing those evidence-based practices in the social sciences. The next area that our committee looked at was elementary science. And you can see there, a lot of publishers were considered. In this case, the, our teachers piloted one resource, which was TWIG Science. It was the only one of the original considered publishers that met all of our criteria on our rubric. And so our teachers piloted that and made the comparisons between their current materials and TWIG. You can see there that after their pilots, the top reasons there, again, always starting with our alignment with standards, authentic quality materials in Spanish, as well as scaffolds to support all the learners, lots of hands-on learning opportunities, which are critical in science education. And TWIG also included what are called fast-track units, which helped to align with our instructional time allotments for elementary science, and that was a really great fit with our instructional program. And then our fourth area is middle school science. We considered and piloted both LabAids and OpenSci at Carolina. And the recommendation on the next slide is for sixth through eighth grade to implement the LabAid CPUB curriculum. And there, the key areas here when we looked at science were, again, that hands-on experiences that were highly engaging for students, a lot of connections to the real world, the organization of the materials, and then tight science, standards alignment in science with a focus on both science and engineering practices. So we will be back at the next board meeting for a further vote on these items, but we want to let you know that our teachers feel very strongly about each of the recommendations that they are making to the board. And we look forward to any questions that you have and your approval next month or later this month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent calendar. Superintendent Castaneda, do you wish to provide review of any item on the consent calendar?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Chair, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Did you get that? Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Director Artis, second. All in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
Raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Have one opposed. Director Hudson. The motion is approved. As a reminder, everything in the Information Standard Reports section is provided for the board's review ahead of the meeting. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
I do not, thank you.
All right. That takes us to our Board Reports section of the agenda, where directors and student advisors share work from formal committee assignments and activities of the board related to youth programs and school district activities since the last board meeting. Kayton, would you like to start?
Recently, since the last board meeting at McKay, I've been seeing a lot of success among, among our students. Our FBLA program, and they just went to the regional competitions, and I know at least one of them has qualified for nationals. I know over spring break, our orchestra was in Chicago. That was really big for them and a really great opportunity. There was one other, oh, yeah, today, the concert choir at McKay and a couple other choirs throughout the district, there was a choir festival for OSA, so I know that's a, that was really exciting. It's a qualifier for state, so a lot of choir students were really excited about that. And hopefully, hopefully, we qualified, so looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm so sorry. Wait, can you hear me?
Yes. Who is this? It's who?
Oh, it's Sophia.
Oh, okay.
We didn't know this, but that's wonderful.
Wonderful. Would you like to make a report?
Yes, I'm so sorry for joining late. I was actually, similar to choir, orchestra and symphony has their district competition, also a qualifier for state this Saturday, so good luck to everyone competing, and my symphony is also competing, so we had a later rehearsal than usual. I also just want to give a shout out to our amazing music teachers, obviously throughout the district, but I have had the pleasure of working with Mr. Meyer and Mr. Verdacken at South, and they are just amazing. To combat Kayden's shout out of FBLA, I have to, I have to shout out DECA. In two weeks, we're also going to our international competition, and they're similar programs, but very, very different. And I'm happy to hear that our district is, has representation in both. And I do go to South, and so unfortunately, McNary and South had some unfortunate news to us on Monday. We had a two-hour delay to kind of give staff and students time to process the passing of Leah Anderson. She was a counselor at McNary and then transferred to South. And I personally did not get the chance to meet her or interact with her, but I, everyone who I talked to who did have interactions with her just mentioned how positive and what an impact, amazing impact she had on them. And so just wanted to say that. And then also, this last week, I think it was this last week, on Wednesday, I was able to go with Ms. Olga Cobb to a dual-language principal meeting, and I got to sit on that. And it was really cool to be able to go into our dual-language classes. I used to be a dual-language student at Harriet in Elementary School and at Walker for Middle School. And it is so amazing to see now that we have so many more dual-language schools, because I actually moved from South to West to go to dual-language. So it's really cool to see how that program has expanded and how it is not split into half and half, English and Spanish days. And actually, Olga, if you found out the name of the nice lady who makes, makes the chickens to support our elementary school versions of the comm room, I don't know if she's there, but knows who I'm talking about.
She's, she's not here, but I guarantee you that Olga knows everything, including the name of the nice lady who makes the chickens.
Well, there's, we visited the comm room, and there was some, like, stuffed animal chickens that apparently the comm room lady called up, she just makes, like, she just, just a neighborhood lady that just makes a ton of chickens for our district and gives them to students, and the students, like, takes the.
Yes, and we will bring her to a spotlight because it is pretty meaningful, what she does for our students, so that will be coming next month in one of our spotlights.
Thank you, Olga.
Never mind, Sophia, Olga was here.
All right. Director Precy?
I do not have anything to report this month.
Director Cadenha?
I have a quick update. I had the opportunity to speak to the youth and law class at McKay a couple of weeks ago, so I appreciated the invite from the teacher, Ms. Cassidy. I got to speak with kiddos about my career path post-law school and my journey to be elected on the school board. And I even got the experience to witness a fire drill, and it was done very well, very orderly, nice to know, but it gave me time to chit-chat with students more one-on-one outside for about 15 to 20 minutes, which was nice. Yeah, and it's just great to visit our classrooms, to see the kids and teachers in action. There's really a lot of good happening in Salem Kaiser Public Schools.
And then? Director?
As I finish my mint, yes. Well, I had the honor and pleasure to attend the Future Chef Culinary Competition. I can attest that Emma's Swedish pancakes were to die for, and it was absolutely amazing. All the chefs really deserve an honor. It was so fun seeing everybody there with, just so proud of their creations, and I loved the stories that were told about how they came up with their ideas and their ingredients and just the testing and all the things. And they were pretty heavy, heavy sample sizes, too. I think I ate like five meals during that hour. It was amazing, so it was a joy to be a part of.
Director Hudson?
Thank you. I felt very fortunate as well. I didn't expect to gain so, like, see so much, so much of all of that. I thought it was extra special. You touched on the fact of the history, and this, one little guy was telling us the story about his dish, and he said, basically, it was a representation of his grandpa who had passed. And it was a recipe that his family had loved, but they didn't get to capture before he passed. And so he was trying to recreate it and get that right taste and flavor. And I told him, that totally resonates with me, that's happened in our family. But it was just so sweet, and hers was, was similar to the same story. But that also brings me thanks for. But that also brings me, thanks for bringing up Ms. Anderson. Because my eldest was very shocked by that as well. And she was, I got to meet her, well, several times I spoke with her, but I got to hang out with her because I ended up being in a, I was at level three drill as well at the school one day. So we spent quite a bit of time in the counselor's office and got to chat with her and know her personality a lot. And through my daughter, with her schooling and college education, she'd gone to NYU, she was, she inspired my daughter to really want to do that as well. She showed that she cared. She was telling me the stories about every day she thinks of the students during that drill and worried that something would happen, how she would effectively get them out safely. And she talked about different theories and scenarios that cross her mind as she would go to bed at night. And, and again, she was just kind. And I think that that passion was pretty amazing and rare. And I hope that, like those dishes, I know she will be remembered with my daughter Kira, and that's just one student out of the many and the staff. So just blessings to her family. Thank you for sharing her with us.
Dr. Shandegary?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was visiting Washington DC on a social visit. It's a beautiful time to go there. But I took this as an opportunity to go meet our Congresswoman's office, Congresswoman Selina's office, and had a nice discussion with her staff on public education and health. And likewise, I met Congressman Benz, Cliff Benz, from Eastern Oregon, and his legislative director and staff. You know, prior to going there, I had reached out to our two union leaders and thank you for sharing the concerns. Because I really wanted to kind of share with them that, you know, we, our public education, our public schools, especially the Salem Kaiser, we depend a lot on federal money. Especially, I'm particularly interested in making sure the Title I, Special Ed, you know, the civil rights and the data collection and all those core elements, which are very important, are preserved. I don't care who runs it, but as long as it's preserved, because those are non-negotiable. I went to the African-American Museum, and it took a lot to reach this point. And I really want to say that I spent six hours in that museum. And I really said it took a lot of Reconstruction era amendments. It didn't come easy. So for me, it was very important. So I just, and I want to say, it was amazing. They were very kind. They gave me plenty of time. And then you can state your story and explain it to them. And I got their emails, et cetera, and I followed it up with an email. Yes, we do, as citizens, have a lot of power. It is by our consent that we select our government and send them there. So we also have a responsibility to participate and engage. So I just took it upon myself as a citizen of one and to speak on behalf of our teachers and teachers' union and what their concerns were. And they were very kind enough to reply to my email. And I also reached out to our superintendent. And so that's my little story. I'm sorry I didn't have time to hang out in schools. But I thought, you know, after all, we are the boss and we are the people who elect our representative. So we have a responsibility to speak up. And that's how I spent my time. So it was beautiful. The cherry blossom festival was wonderful. The museums were great. Thank you.
Thank you. It was my pleasure to attend the African-American Youth Leadership Conference today in Carvalas. I want to give a shout out to Darlene Anderson, her team, who did, who gave a great conference. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Brian Burcher. He's the African-American Black First Oregon Teacher of the Year. He's a third-grade teacher. He did a great job motivating our students. He joined me and Pastor Brooks in our session, Stepping Into Your Future. We were able to share with students some essential steps that they need to take and make sure that they check off in order to make sure they are ready for graduation and ready for their future. It was awesome. I also want to give a shout out to Ashley Stovin for our board placemats. They are just beautiful and awesome. And I'm going to encourage board members to please read them, and let's make sure that we follow the information on the board placemats. Thank you so very much. At this time, it is 8:05. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.